How you doing, Joe?
Good, how you doing tonight?
Good.
Let's see. Trying to decide what speaker I want to put this in. Let's try this tonight. Yeah, we finally repainted the spare bedroom because our granddaughter, son and daughter-in-law and granddaughter came for Christmas. So we have a nursery now, so I kind of feel like Oliver in the, in the white void now, so.
Gotcha. There we go. That's better.
Well, you sound good. Just the speaker, the mic on the computer?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm downstate doing some stuff with my mom, so I just. It's warmer down here. It's 10 degrees warmer down here.
I, I just went out to get the mail. I just went out like this in my sweater, put a pair of shoes on. See, I'm a winter person, so.
Oh, I don't mind it, but yeah, you know, hey, it's, it's January. It's supposed to be cold.
It is.
Have a nice Christmas and New Years?
Oh, we did. Busy. I mean, we had people all over. Most people I've seen in our house for ages because we just had a house full the whole time, which is really nice, so.
That's nice, yeah.
And my, my, we were supposed to have a big Christmas at my nieces' and God, what, the 23rd, she tested positive for COVID, so we had to make all alternative plans, so. We just kind of laid low with, with my, my two sons and their, you know, his wife and his girlfriend and just, you know, hung out here, so.
That's good. Yeah, my daughter, my daughter just went back to school today, so.
How's she doing?
Doing great.
Still pursuing, still pursuing physical therapy?
Yep, yep.
That's good.
It keeps her busy, that's for sure.
Yeah, I should bring up the agenda on here. So how far downstate are you?
Uh, just probably Champaign, Urbana.
Okay.
Little over two hours.
Where about, what little town?
Uh, Buckley, Illinois.
I'm not familiar with that one, so.
Uh, goes Buckley, then it goes Paxton, then Rantoul, then Champaign.
Oh, okay, okay.
In between Kankakee and Champaign.
Okay. We may have been through there a few times. We had to take the back way a couple of times due to accidents on the 50, 57.
Yeah. Yep, probably. If you blink, you go through, if you blink, you go right through the town, though.
Kind of disappointed. I finally got down to Rantoul, to the museum down there, and then they closed up shortly after we were there, so that was a nice little museum down there.
Yeah, it is. It is nice. I've been there a couple of times.
Kyle, can you hear us? I'm taking it as a yes.
Yeah, I can hear you. Yeah.
That was a, that was a test and you passed, Joe.
Nice job on the roads this weekend, by the way. That was a.
Oh, thank you. We left about 2:00 AM. I got home, started doing the driveway, and it started snowing again. I was waiting for the call to get called back out. It never happened, so I was kind of happy about that.
It wasn't a very slippery snow. It, it seems like, have you guys gotten any more prudent in your salt spreading with the, and snows like this?
A, a little bit, but also when it gets like 17, 15 degrees and stuff, the salt just does not do what it normally does. It just kind of, it'll melt when the sun hits it and then just refreeze.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I had an icy spot in the driveway and he, my dog did the, the Bambi thing. It was, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't feel bad, but it, it really is funny, you know?
Yeah.
So Steve, is that where you're from? Central Illinois or?
Yep, yep. I, I grew up around this area all my life and then got out of here in 1987. Moved to the East Coast for 14 years outside of Washington DC.
No, I don't think I knew that. What part, what, that one I may know better. What, what suburb do you live in?
Silver Spring, Maryland.
Okay.
Yeah, I lived, we went out there for five years and we were there for 14.
I used to go out to Burnham quite a bit for weekly meetings and that, so that was.
Okay, yep. You know, I, I love that area, but it is very, it's such a busy area and traffic's crazy, so.
Oh, I shouldn't say.
I don't miss that part of it.
No.
Let's see. I thought I was late for the meeting. I looked at the time on my computer and it was like, I'm like, oh, I'm late, but the time's never, never right on the computer, so.
We're, we had a time, but our latest bingeing is Lost in Space, the, so we, we were watching that. Okay, it's 46 minutes. I have just enough time to watch an episode and get upstairs, so. Then I would say it's the best science fiction show I ever watched, but it's, it's solid for, you know.
Hey, can you guys hear us?
Yes, I can.
Yep. Can you hear us?
Yeah. Really loud.
Yes, too loud.
All of us or just me?
All of you. Especially you.
Let me turn it down. I did do automatic. Let's see.
I did too. I'll bring it down a bit.
We are live streaming. Can I, I'd like to record it. 7:29.
Testing, check, 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 check. How do you hear me now? Hear me now?
You can bring it down 10,000 feet. You're okay.
We can hear you.
Okay. Good?
Yep.
Okay.
I would have gotten to turn it all the way down. That's something Tony.
Like, like that?
That's exactly what Tony would do. Who have my.
I'm going to get you an etch a sketch.
Oh.
I figured that'd be perfect.
I don't know. I don't want to get rid of this. You know, this, this has a lot of emotional, uh, did you see this? I have, I have this tablet. I have a pen. I have one piece of paper in here.
And he's had it for three months.
Whether I need it or not.
That's leftover from college.
That's right. That's right.
Actually, I, I very dutifully take that, put it back and save it for later.
He does, he does.
We are live and we're being recorded. Behave yourselves accordingly. Some people don't know.
Oh, that's what it is, too.
I'm just trying to open the file instead of just doing the email. It wasn't working. Too cold. Didn't want to behave. Maybe there's a message in there. Got a car seat. The rearview mirrors were popped in, so I dropped the window, popped them out, and the windows wouldn't go. Probably a cold.
Now you know how they tell in Game of Thrones. I'm just saying.
Okay, we got 7:30. We've got a meeting. Let's have the pledge of allegiance.
What do we? It's America. For which? Injustice for all.
Mr. Braden. Mr. Dattley.
Here.
Harney.
Here.
Mr. Thor.
Here.
Mr. Hoffman. Mr. Nimitz.
Here.
Okay, we've got a forum. We have got a meeting. According to the gubernatorial proclamation, we are allowed to have a remote access, so tonight. Uh, we have a number of individuals taking advantage of that. Uh, in Village Hall this evening is trustee Thorne, trustee Harney. Uh, chief of police, director of finance, village clerk, and myself, along with a couple of attendees in the audience and the AV man. Uh, attending remotely is trustee Diatley, trustee Nemick. Joining on remote is village attorney Schuster, village engineer Steele, and public works director Kyle Killigian. Okay, we've got that all set, so meeting or votes tonight, folks, will be by roll call. We've got people attending remote. Uh. Okay, next item is the closure of Village Hall due to the current COVID-19 situation. If you recall, on the end of the year, we closed Village Hall until January 4th, which is tomorrow. We've got the possibility this evening of extending it. Well, actually, I extended it last week until the 18th of January. And we could ratify that closure tonight and, or you can extend the closure into February, what would that be, the 3rd? First one is the 7th. Okay, February 7th. Uh, I did not take it to February 7th because my restrictions are 30 days. And extending the closure of Village Hall through the end of January would have exceeded my 30 days. So I've just exceeded, did it to the 19th of January, which is two weeks from tomorrow. If the board so wishes to, or desires to extend that to February 7th, you may so do so. In the meantime, I'd like a motion to ratify my closure through January 18th.
So move.
Second, Diatley.
Moved by Thorne, seconded by Harney to ratify the closure of the Village Hall to January 18th. Uh, roll call please. Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Nemitz.
Aye.
Four affirmative votes, no negative votes, a motion, so passes. Okay, we will then take up to the closure again on the 7th, 18th. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, that is, I've got one other item I can get rid of right now. And that is occasionally the appointment of Dan, Don Plas to the, be the chair of planning and zoning. If you all recall at the last meeting, I mentioned that I would be appointing Don as the chair with the loss of Dirk Pukla. So if we could have that more, uh, passed and ratified also, I appreciate it. Motion to ratify the appointment of Don Plas to chair of PMZ.
So move.
Second, Diatley.
Moved by Thor and seconded by Diatley to approve the appointment of Don Plas as chairman of the PMZ. Roll call please. Mr. Nemitz.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
More affirmative votes, no negative votes, a motion, so passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Um. Oh, the minutes. Worked brought to my attention. I missed. Item number four, minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes of December 20, 2021.
So move, Nemitz.
Moved by Nemitz, seconded by Harney. Are there any corrections to the minutes of December 20, 2021? If not, roll call please. Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Nemitz.
Aye.
Four affirmative votes, no negative votes, a motion, so passes. Uh, court's report. I have no report tonight. Thank you, Tony. Planning and zoning, we have no report. Attorney's report, Mr. Schuster.
No report this evening. We have a, oh, we do have a matter that, sorry, it is listed on my, uh, report. The Illinois General Assembly uh, has voted to allow municipalities to assess a greater fee for registering of video gaming terminals in the municipality. So, except for this registration, all the rest of video gaming is run by and controlled by the state. But you, each municipality is allowed to keep track of and, and know the locations of video gaming terminals in the village. Uh, there's at least some at the, uh, place in Spring Hill, uh, Commons, uh, Elsie's, is it? Uh, I'm not sure if, are there some at Salsa Street now?
No, Salsa had originally thought of putting them in, but changed the mind.
Yeah, so at any rate, um, and I believe you charge your registration on a fiscal year basis, so, so the fee in May will be increased uh, from $25 per terminal to, up to $250 per terminal. So you have before you a draft resolution, I'm sorry, ordinance that would allow for this change in the registration rate to be, uh, charged, uh, commencing the next, uh, cycle.
Okay. Anyone like to, uh, motion the approval of ordinance 2020 dash, 2022 dash, dash one? Amending the fee for registration of video games within the village of Sleepy Hall.
So moved.
Second, Diatley.
Moved by Thor and seconded by Diatley to approve ordinance 2022 dash one, amending the fee for registration of video game terminals within the village. Any further comments, questions, or discussion?
We know how they're doing right now as far as patronage and people coming in and using the machines?
They seem to be doing pretty good, Joe.
Okay.
Uh, what you do is take a look at the, uh, share of revenues that we get. We originally only figured around $1,200 or $1,500 and we're probably somewhere close to five or six of those.
I haven't seen.
We have, we haven't gotten any current update on it, but they were exceeding what we'd anticipated. Uh, what this will do for us, though, Joe, is instead of $25 per machine, which is what we've got right now, we can go to the $250, which is what a lot of our neighboring home rule communities are already at. Non-home rule were restricted to $25 per machine. This removes that restriction and allows us to go up to $250. Uh, my recollection is we've got six machines now at Elsie's. Because the year, when they opened, they were allowed up to five machines. And I believe last year that was bumped to six machines. I believe they took that sixth machine at Elsie's. So that would be roughly $1,500 to us that we did not have last year. So.
Right. Yeah, it's not a lot of money, but it.
No.
It, it better, uh, better reflects the, the, just the hassle you have of administratively seeing that this gets done and and it is kept right.
You'd be surprised what we can do with a thousand dollars.
Thousand here, a thousand there.
That's right.
Okay, there'd be no other comments, questions, or discussion. Roll call please. Mr. Nemitz.
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
No?
No.
Uh, Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Village president votes aye. Four to one, motion still carries.
That's all I have tonight, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schuster. Engineer's report, Mr. Steele.
Nothing to record.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, finance, Mr. Van.
Request a, uh, for the warrants in the amount of $67,367.88. Motion.
So move.
Circumfiring.
Moved by Thor and seconded by Harney to approve the warrants of December, of January 30, 2022, in the amount of $67,367.88.
So you'd have to second it, too.
Okay, any additions, deletions, comments, or questions? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Nemitz.
Aye.
Four affirmative votes, no negative votes, a motion, so passes.
Um, this is more of just a point of information. Um, Mr. Pickett had asked me to look into the loan that the general fund had made to the water for the water meters back in 2019. Um, I was told that 175,000 of it was paid out of water and the other 175,000 came from the general fund with the understanding that the money would be replaced. Um, and none of my predecessors had set up the loan. So I went looking at the figures for this and I found that the entire amount was paid for by the general fund. And not only that, that there were other expenses for water in, in possibly sewer that were also paid by the general fund and never reimbursed. So I'm in the process of trying to document exactly how much that balance is, that water and sewer, what was the general fund. The quick look, including the loan, was 500,000, but I was only looking at a very small portion. So what I've done is I pulled all the warrants from 2018 and 2019, uh, those fiscal years. And I'm going to now match them up to the transfers that were supposed to take place and I'll be able to figure out from there. In any event, I figured out that the amount that the meters cost were, were approximately, uh, $352,500. So I established a loan between the general fund and the water um, to make monthly payments at an interest rate of 4.75%, which was prime rate at the time of the, uh, the meter installation with a 10-year payback. So at this point, um, water and soup or water will pay back the general fund approximately $3,700 a month. So, you know, for the next 10 years, starting January 1st. So, um, hopefully the, the balance, you know, I'm, hopefully I'm missing something and, and the amounts were being transferred, but I don't think so. I'll report back next month with, I find.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, thank you, Eugene. Any comments or questions, Joe?
No, I, no, is that, what, what numbers, do you have the numbers that Brian crunched and did all for that? Does, how does that match up with what you're seeing so far?
It's, it's very, it's very close to what he had. It's, you know, within like $3,000 of what he had, um, put as an asset. As a fixed.
Or as a loan payback, though, is it all the numbers he calculated for the meter fees and that will, will be able to pay it all back in 10 years?
Yeah.
Like he calculated?
Yeah, no, there's none of this. He didn't do any calculations.
I got pages of emails and all the calculations, the amount and all that, so I thought he, he said that he had given all that to you.
Nope.
Okay, it was done, so I don't know how we find that.
Okay. I'll look, but I, you know, I did not.
You can share those, some of those emails, Joe. It might be helpful.
I'll take a look, see if I can find. So, yeah, no, he, because that's how he came up with that. It should be in some of the packets, too, wasn't it? Does that ring a bell to anybody? Because that's how he came up with that meter fee to pay it back in 10 years on the amount that was owed in that, so.
Joe, do you have an approximate date as to when that would have been shared?
I do not.
Uh.
I know Steve and I had a couple. It was pre-COVID, because I can remember meeting in the trustees' room. We had at least two meetings, Steve. With him.
I'm trying to remember. He came in, uh, August of 2020?
That's all right, okay.
That's not pre-COVID. It'd be August of 2018.
Yeah.
Well, the meters were put in the summer of 19.
Correct. I think it was in August or September.
Yeah, the meters were put in August, September of 2019. Ryan did not come into the picture for almost a year.
Okay, so maybe it was his emails online. Maybe my, my Zoom meetings then, so.
And I don't.
He did a lot, because that's, because he, he had calculated that meter rate back based on what it was going to take to pay back the general fund and then build up enough money to, money to replace them and then another 10 years because the plan was to replace them in 20 years. Now we had, Kyle, the, uh, life expectancy of it?
Uh, the life expect, of the, the, the battery.
Right.
So the ra, the radio read unit, we don't necessarily have to replace the whole meter, just the, the top part of it.
Well, let's take a quick look into it. Let's get this resolved, Joe.
It, it sounds good. I, I always thought it was all resolved, so that was, this was the, it was the first I heard that we were not paying it back, so.
No. Yeah, I knew of that going back to, uh, Brian and Matt. I remember informing Eugene when he first came on board that this was something that was going to need to be done after the audit was cleared away, so.
What was the agreement with, uh, do we have any agreements with the firm as far as contact or digging that stuff out? Or do we still have access to his emails or his Excel sheets or his login?
I, I've got his, um, his files, so I can, you know, but again, it's, it's how, how he labeled them, so I'll have to look through each and every file to try to figure out what he labeled it.
Okay, we'll see if we can find anything. In the meantime, Joe, whatever you've got, if you could share, it would be helpful.
I'll see what I can find, so.
Okay, though. Uh, still a work in progress. All right, thank you, Eugene. Uh, comments from the public? No public this evening. Uh, move on to trustees' reports, roads and parks. Mr. Harney?
I'm sure over the Christmas holidays and then again on New Year's Day, we heard the sound of plows out there frequently, so thanks to Kyle and the Public Works Department.
Yeah.
Keeping the roads clear.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Ed. Uh, finance. George is not here. Did he leave you anything? All right. Uh, water and sewer. Mr. Nemitz.
Um, we had two water main breaks over the holiday. Kyle, you want to go into details on those? Kyle, you want to go into details on those, just so we, we can get it in the record and maybe put the locations, so Tony can put in the minutes, so there's some record of these things.
Um, the first break was at twelve oh nine, uh, Jill Peak Drive. Uh, it was just a linear crack around the break, it was very minimal amount of water loss, that was, that started Christmas Day, we fixed it the day after Christmas. And then the next one was at nine hundred Locust, um, kind of on the west side of Locust, back probably about a hundred and, hundred feet from the road, right before a fire hydrant. Same, same type of break, not much water. So that's, those were the two.
Thanks. Um, I should report, too, it was brought to my attention that there was a part of the village code and the water department were not following. Um, it appears that when they, at some point in the past, that people that were on wells that are on a water main were allowed to keep them, but as part of that, they have to send in a water test report yearly that says that their water is, uh, satisfactory. Uh, Wendy had said that we're not doing that, so I'd send an email off to Wendy Eugene to start doing that in the spring. The, um, Swallow Wild Conservation District has a testing program, it's really inexpensive. Um, my understanding is only about, I think, thirteen hydrant counts, thirteen or fourteen hydrant count, there's not many, so, um, I'd ask Wendy to adhere to our villa ordinances and start doing that in the spring and keeping, uh, you know, sending a letter out to the people saying we need a test and then just keeping track of the responses, so. Um, any questions on that? And then, uh, Eugene, it looks like you did some work on the primary engineering agreement with Heinz Association, so I will yield the floor to you if you want to bring that up now.
I didn't do any, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
The approval of the Heinz Association Primary Engineering Ag- I didn't put that in the packet, I thought you had put that in the packet.
Uh, it wasn't me.
Steve?
It was Tony and I.
Hey, Tony, I yield the floor to you.
I have a non-speaking role. He has a non-speaking role. I'll tell Tony to put it in, so I can blame Tony.
Yes.
Uh, Jeff Steele might have something to say about it.
Jeff might have something to say about it, this is the, uh, proposal that Jeff presented last year to us. Uh, we had a conversation that, uh, it's time to get this thing moving. Uh, Eugene and I have, uh, gone over the ARPA requirements, I've talked to, uh, our State Rep, Ms. Ness, and it appears that we can use ARPA funds and the DECO funds for preliminary engineering at this point. So that brings the agreement between the village and Heinz for the water main system improvement uh, back to the forefront. Go forward with this and we can use the funds from DECO or ARPA to start this, then I think we start it and get this thing going. The question though is, does it include everything we need, Jeff?
Yeah, uh, basically what it includes is, uh, any contacts that we have to do with any utilities, um, EPA contacts, uh, creating the engineering plans, uh, obviously talking to the village as far as where we want to do any of the work, um, creating engineering plans, uh, specifications, submitting those to the EPA in order to get that approved and then, uh, basically going out for bid.
Okay. Uh. Now, on this, one of the issues we've got with the sewage is we've got about seventeen residents that are on well and city sewer, but not city water. Can we in, tap into these people, get them onto the water system, meter?
Yeah, from what I remember is basically is it's, uh, is that Laurel Court, that's where we have that.
Laurel and, uh, Rainbow, yes.
Yeah. It's basically, we already have an eight-inch line going up to, uh, basically the end of Laurel Court. So all we'd end up having to do is tap into that and then run the line along Laurel and then down Rainbow and then tie it in at that intersection of Rainbow and, uh, you know, Hillcrest. So that could be accomplished if, uh, the village desired.
Would that be part of this scope?
Uh, it'd still be the same, uh, cost as far as, I believe we have percentage, uh, six and a half percent. Six and a half percent, so yeah, it could be included in that.
Okay. Actually, I believe it also have to go down, all the way down Rainbow, to Rainbow Court, and there's also Elm Court on there, too.
Yeah, that was included in the initial one, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. But those are, yeah, items like that, I just assume wrap up with this project if it is all possible. Because it also carries over into another discussion we're having with our neighbors to the east on the amount of sewage that we're, uh, dealing with.
Yeah, Mark had sent me an email, uh, yesterday, or the, maybe it was this morning in regards to that, so I was going to look into that when I get back into the office tomorrow.
Right. Right, we've got, uh, seventeen, I believe it is, unmetered, uh, sewer accounts. And, uh, if we're going to do this major project, just assume, you know, wrap them up and get them metered and get that issue resolved at the same time. So. Uh, extension of the water main to the areas of the village that are not serviced, would that be covered in this agreement?
Um, once you start getting up into that area is, uh, you'd want to start doing like a water study, basically figuring out the pressure, um, uh, how much, uh, sizing that's necessary on that, so that wouldn't necessarily be included in on that. I'd end up having to take a look just to see, because basically all it is, just plugging in and all the information into a water model and running that information through there. But yeah, once you start getting up towards that kind of expansions is, that's when you really want to start doing a water, uh, model on everything as far as pressure wise, just make sure you're not going to have any pressure losses for that amount of mix.
Okay. Anything else on here that we could, we're thinking about that could, should be included in this?
Not that I'm aware of, because basically is, uh, we have that map, uh, we were talking about doing Elm Court there, um, Rainbow Court, and then I can include in on that, uh, up around Laurel in order to connect all the sewer into water. Um, and I obviously sit down with Kyle just to see if, maybe if there are any other sections that we want to go ahead and accomplish while we're actually doing this and then get up at least rough cost estimation as far as, uh, what the, uh, construction might end up being, but otherwise is pretty much included all.
Okay, Joe, you want this to get going?
Yeah, I wanted to get going for last year, so I'm, I'm all in, so we got the money, if you say we got the money, let's do it.
Well, we don't have the money, but we got people to say they'll pay it.
No, I, that's, that's what I mean, so. So I go, let's see, where is that? I am not on that page right now. I just, uh.
Let's move this.
Yeah, I, I go ahead and, uh, move that we authorize the village president to assign the preliminary engineering and final engineering and construction guidance agreement for the Village of Sleepy Hollow Water Main System Improvements year. Should we call it year twenty twenty-two now that we're a year behind?
Sure.
Second.
Okay, moved by Nimitz, seconded by Thornd to authorize the village president to sign the preliminary engineering, final engineering, and construction guide agreement for the twenty twenty-two water main system improvements for the Village of Sleepy Hollow.
Hit it, that, Tony?
I'm too tired to vote now.
I got a cramp in my hand, babe. Okay, any further comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, roll call, please. Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Thornd.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
More affirmative votes, no negative votes in motion, so passes. All right, anything else, Joe?
No, that's all, isn't that enough? I say, Eugene, give me a call tomorrow, we'll discuss that whole, I'll give you the background and the history and we can start looking for some of that stuff, because I think a lot of that, a lot of what you're looking to try and do is may have been done.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Police and Public Safety, Mr. Diatley.
Um, I don't have anything tonight unless the chief has something he needs to add.
Uh, no, I just, Kyle's aware, we, uh, we've gotten our, our bids, uh, three bids so far for, uh, fuel tanks. Looks like we're, we're so far, we've got two of them that are going to provide the fuel tanks for free. Uh, so hopefully we'll have, uh, we'll have a, a formal proposal together for the next meeting and with all the numbers, I'm still waiting for fuel costs from one of the company.
Okay, thank you. Nothing further.
All right, thank you, Steve, appreciate it. Uh, Public Buildings and Environment, Mr. Thornd.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, Building and Zoning, Mr. Perino. Mr. Perino is dancing in the sun. He is in Tucson this evening. Uh. Okay, moving to old business, any old business to come before the board? Do you know old business, any new business to come before the board?
Nope.
There's no new business to come before the board?
I move we adjourn.
I'll second it.
Moved by the, seconded by Nimitz to adjourn, roll call, please. I was going to second it. Uh, uh, Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Thornd.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Motion so carries, we are adjourned. On one and all, remember, the next meeting will not be the third Monday of January, it will be the third Tuesday of January. It's on the seventeenth, we're meeting the eighteenth. Seventeenth, it's Martin Luther King's Day. The eighteenth is the day with the World Hall. Village Hall will be closed on the seventeenth.
It's President's Day, too, is that the following?
That's February.
Yeah, that's kicked back.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Well, guys, thanks for attending.
Run through your car while you can.
I tell, uh, Eugene, I've gone back, I've gone through all of the, the twenty twenty packets, I don't see what he's referring to, but I'm just standing.
He's got there, I just saw something, it's a meter depreciation charge. But that's not a loan.
No. That.
No, well.
Joe's still here.
Yeah, I'm still here.
But we can't, so. No, even talk.
So Brian had calculated the numbers about how much to repay the loan and then what it was going to be to depreciate, is what he'd figured out. And then based on that, he figured out to pay the loan off in ten years and depreciate him over next ten years to replace him in twenty years, replace the parts uh, with the labor. Um, and that's how he came up with that number for the meter fees. So do you have that, or what do you have?
All I have is a depreciation schedule. But to pre, it says meter depreciation charge. But, you know, again, like I said, I, I have to look through all of his, uh, stuff.
Yeah, because, because I can remember all these numbers tossed out, that I mean, I'm a finance person, but they were talking about interbank loan transfer rates and prime rates and what we charged in the past and what villages, we charged other villages, so there was much discussion and emails flying out, you know, around about that, so. Um, I'm not sure of the finance part, and I would, you know, refer to Donna, the Finance Committee or otherwise, that, you know,
Yeah.
uh, setting up the loan payment fee, but Steve, you were in on those, too, because you had talked about digging out the paperwork to see how the loan was paid back for the last loan, the terms and the agree, and the wording and all that, right?
Well, I asked Matt and Brian to do that.
Just waiting for, uh, back this month.
But, uh, I'm not sure we ever got to that, we never did get to that point with either one of them.
Okay, and I always assumed that if you asked somebody to do something, they said I did it, that they did it, so. Um, and I don't dig deep enough in the, the, the books to see the, you know, the fee or the money or otherwise, to see what's being moved around, so.